Again, can everyone come in? So we can get started.
I'm gonna pay my way.
Those in the back, if you want to come get and find a seat so we can get started. It's on. Okay, we're gonna get started. And, uh... Hello, okay, like to call. Keep going in and out. Call this, um, village board. Testing. It's going in and out whoever's doing the, uh... Okay, uh, we... Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Coleman? No, 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 I'm sorry. Rowan Sheen? Juju? Trustee Bell? Trustee Brewer? She is accent with notice. Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jazinski?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Item number two, approval of minutes. I'll accept a motion to approve the proceedings of the committee meeting for April 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Jazinski and second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brewer? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next item, approve the proceedings of the board meeting of April 27th, 2021.
So moved.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Jazinski and second by trustee Todd. Is there any question? Madam Clerk, could you call the room?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Absent.
Absent.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the proceedings of the committee meeting of May 4th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Jazinski, second by trustee Bell. Are there any questions? Yes, he did say that. Madam, could you call the room?
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Accent. And trustee Grant?
Yes.
The motion is carried. All right, new business. I'll accept the motion to approve payroll and accounts payable according to South Village policy in the amount of $320,832.81.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Jazinski, second by trustee Williams. Is there any question? Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Accent, trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, approve a resolution of the Village of South Village, Cook County, honoring, uh, Mayor Derek David Hanks with an honorary street designation. Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Jazinski. Any question? Madam Clerk? Please call the room.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Accent, trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have another four comments, um, from the trustees that are, um, leaving. Um, I'm gonna have one here, so I'll defer to trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna make this brief because I don't like to be in the cold. This has been the longest, the shortest four years of my life. It went pretty quick. But some days it felt like forever. My advice to the incoming board is to put your politics aside and work for the good of the Village of South Village and the residents. Remember that you work for all the residents. My prayers are for the Village of residents that healing may begin and the village can move forward. This has been quite an experience and it has been my pleasure working with each and every one of you. May God bless you and please continue to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, it's been a pleasure, uh, trustee Todd working with you also for these past four years. And thank you for your input that you gave to the board and your service to the village, the villagers here in South Village. All right, at this time, I will ask for the German Sani Dae.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Jazinski and... I'm sorry, trustee Todd and second by trustee Bell. Madam Pla-
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
And trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll take a short recess and we will start right in on the inaugurations. Okay, we can get started? We can get started. First, we'd like to have a short introduction by, uh, none other than my oldest daughter, Alita. And she's gonna give you an introduction. First of the judge, we're so happy and proud and able to... I'm just saying, this is a feather my hat, but Judge Todd to come out and swear the dignitaries end today. So, Alita is on you.
Good evening, family, friends, and distinguished guests. My name is Alita Brazil and I am the oldest daughter of Mayor Derrick N. Burgess. At this time, I have the privilege to introduce the honorable Cynthia Y. Cobb, who will be administering the oath of office this evening. Justice Cynthia Y. Cobb was appointed to the Supreme Court of Illinois as a justice from the Illinois Appellate Court in 2015. As one of 24 justices serving in Cook County, she hitters appeals in criminal, civil, and juvenile cases. Prior to her appointment to the appellate court, Justice Cobb served as a trial judge in the Circuit Court of Cook County, where she heard minor and misdemeanor traffic cases, DUIs, cases involving debt collection, eviction, landlord-tenant disputes, and civil jury trials. Before joining the bench, Justice Cobb served as the Director of the Illinois Courts, the eighth-ranking constitutional officer in the state judicial branch. Appointed by the Supreme Court of Illinois, she became the first African-American and the first female to serve in that capacity. During her tenure as Director, Justice Cobb worked closely with the Supreme Court, administering and overseeing all aspects and levels of state court operations, as well as managing the court's nearly $300 million annual budget. Early in her legal career, Justice Cobb served as the senior judicial law clerk to the Supreme Court Chief Justice Charles E. Freeman, becoming the first African-American to serve in that capacity. Prior to that, she served as a judicial law clerk in the appellate court, the same court on which she now serves as a justice. Justice Cobb has been the recipient of numerous awards throughout her career. Currently, she serves on the Illinois Supreme Court Board of Trustees, Illinois Judicial College, the governing body which oversees educational training and professional development for judges and employees in Illinois' vast court system. Board of Directors for South Suburban Pads, some not-for-profit organization which delivers shelter, housing, and rehabilitative services to South Suburban Cook County's homeless population. And Lawyers Lend a Hand, a not-for-profit organization which provides mentoring services to underprivileged youth in the Chicagoland area. Since 2016, she has served as a weekly tutor for children attending the Eaglewood Montessori School. Justice Cobb has previously served as Chairperson of the Illinois Judicial Council, an organization comprised largely of African-American judges, a member on the Board of Directors for the Center for Conflict Resolution, a not-for-profit organization providing alternatives to legal dispute resolution, the Council for Higher Education in Hayton, the Conference of State Court Administrators, and as Chairman of the Executive Board of New Faith Baptist Church in Madison. She received her BA degree from Morgan State University in Baltimore, Maryland, and she holds a master's degree in clinical social work from the University of Maryland. A graduate of IIT Chicago Kent College of Law, Justice Cobb was admitted to the Illinois Bar in 1988. Justice Cobb and her husband Austin are longtime residents of South Suburban Cook County. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce the honorable Cynthia Y. Cobb.
Yes. There you go. I'm trying to turn that way. Yes, ma'am.
Will Mayor Derrick N. Burgess please approach and take the oath of office?
Okay.
Joe.
Okay. Okay, I'll stand here. Come on. Oh, yes, you have to need a microphone for it.
Are you ready to perform?
Yes, I am.
All right, your left hand is on the Bible. If your right hand, repeat after me. I,
I.
Derrick N. Burgess.
Derrick N. Burgess.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Mayor of the Village of South Village.
Of the office of Mayor of the Village of South Village.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
Of the office of Mayor.
Of the office of Mayor.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
I should respect taxpayers' interests.
I will respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
And serving as a faithful protector.
Of the village's assets.
Of the village's assets.
I shall represent the free expression of opinion.
I will represent the free expression of opinion.
Of board members.
Of board members.
And others who seek a hearing.
Of others and others who seek a hearing.
Before the corporate authorities.
Before the corporate authorities.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of residents and employees.
Of residents and employees.
I shall provide leadership.
I will provide leadership.
Towards establishing a structure.
Towards establishing a structure.
And environment.
And environment.
Designed to foster.
Designed to foster.
Transformation and growth.
Transformation and growth.
I shall serve.
I shall serve.
As the village's key advocate.
As the village's key advocate.
On behalf of our community.
On behalf of our community.
Residents.
Residents.
And employees.
And employees.
To advance the visions.
To advance the visions.
For the Village of South Village.
For the Village of South Village.
And...
And...
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To work collaboratively.
To work collaboratively.
With the board.
With the board.
To lead the village.
To lead the village.
Towards fulfilling its visions and goals.
To fulfill its visions and goals.
And fostering excellence.
And fostering excellence.
In every aspect.
In every aspect.
Of the affairs of the village.
Of the affairs of the village.
Congratulations, Mayor Burgess, you passed this.
Thank you.
Will Village Clerk Marva Campbell Pruitt approach and take the oath of office? Are you ready to perform? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I,
I.
Marva Campbell Pruitt.
Marva Campbell Pruitt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the Village of South Village.
Village of South Village.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
The laws.
And the Constitution.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Good enough. And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I shall keep the corporate secret.
That I shall keep the corporate seal.
And all official documents.
All official documents.
Belonging to the village.
Belonging to the village.
I shall be a public servant.
I shall be a public servant.
And liaison.
And liaison.
Within the municipal government.
Within the municipal government.
Upon which the corporate board of authorities.
On which the corporate board of authorities.
All village departments.
All village departments.
And the public.
And the public.
Can rely for information.
Can rely for information.
Regarding the operations.
Regarding the operations.
And legislative history.
And legislative history.
Of the village.
Of the village.
And...
And...
I shall strive to work together.
I shall strive to work together.
With the mayor of South Village.
With the mayor of South Village.
And corporate board of authorities.
And corporate board of authorities.
To lead the village.
Lead the village.
Towards fulfilling its vision and goals.
Towards fulfilling its vision and goals.
Fostering excellence.
Fostering excellence.
In every aspect.
In every aspect.
Of the affairs of the village.
Affairs of the village.
Congratulations, Madam Clerk, you have been selected. Will trustee Roderick R. Grant please approach and take the oath of office? She don't look like singing. Are you ready to perform? Please place your left hand on the Bible. Do you need a mic? Do you have a mic? Are you ready to perform? Yes. Repeat after me. I,
I.
Roderick R. Grant.
Roderick R. Grant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the Village of South Village.
Of the Village of South Village.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I should respect taxpayers' interests.
That I should respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the village's assets.
Of the village's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression.
The free expression.
Of opinion of board members.
Of opinion of board members.
And others who seek a hearing.
And others who seek a hearing.
Before the corporate authorities.
Before the corporate authorities.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of residents.
Of residents.
And employees.
And employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member.
That a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions.
And that decisions.
Can be made only.
Can be made only.
By a majority vote.
By a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek changes.
To seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical.
Through ethical.
And constructive.
And constructive.
Channeled.
Channeled.
And...
And...
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To work together.
To work together.
With the mayor of South Village.
With the mayor of South Village.
And others in leadership positions.
And others in leadership positions.
To lead the village.
To lead the village.
Towards fulfilling.
Towards fulfilling.
Its vision and goal.
Its visions and goals.
And fostering excellence.
And fostering excellence.
In every aspect.
In every aspect.
Of the affairs of the village.
Of the affairs of the village.
Congratulations, trustee.
Thank you.
Will trustee-elect Arnold Coleman please approach and take the oath of office? Are you ready to perform?
Yes.
Repeat after me. I,
I.
Arnold Coleman.
Arnold Coleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge- That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the village of Sawthill.
Of the village of Sawthill.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
Duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my abilities.
And the best of my abilities.
I further swear.
I further swear.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the village's assets.
Of the village's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
Of board members and others.
Of board members and others.
Who seek a hearing before the corporate authorities.
Who seek a hearing before the corporate authorities.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of residents and employees.
Of residents and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member.
That a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that the decisions can be made.
And that the decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote.
Only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek changes in such decisions.
To seek changes in such decisions.
Through ethical.
Through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
And.
And.
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To work together with the mayor of Sawthill.
To work together with the mayor of Sawthill.
And others in leadership positions.
And others in leadership positions.
To lead the village.
To lead the village.
Toward fulfilling its vision and goal.
Toward its visions and goals.
And fostering excellence.
And fostering excellence.
In every aspect.
In every aspect.
Of the affairs of the village.
Of the affairs of the village.
Congratulations trustee Coleman. Well trustee-elect Larry D. Satt, please approach and take the oath of office. I.
I.
Larry D. Satt.
Larry D. Satt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the village of Sawthill.
Of the village of Sawthill.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
Duties of the office of trustee.
Duties of the office of trustee.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my abilities.
And the best of my abilities.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
That I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the village's assets.
Of the village's assets.
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 Assets. I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
Of board members and others.
Of board members and others.
Who seek a hearing.
Who seek a hearing.
Before the corporate authorities.
Before the corporate authorities.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of residents and employees.
Of residents and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member.
That a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And.
And.
That decisions can be made.
And that decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote.
Only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
I shall abide by majority decisions.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek changes in such decisions.
To seek changes in such decisions.
Through ethical.
Through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
And.
And.
I shall strive to work together.
I shall strive to work together.
With the mayor of Sawthill.
With the mayor of Sawthill.
And others in leadership positions.
And others in leadership positions.
To lead the village.
To lead the village.
Toward fulfilling its visions and goals.
Towards fulfilling its visions and goals.
And fostering excellence.
And fostering excellence.
In every aspect.
In every aspect.
Of the affairs of the village.
Of the affairs of the village.
Congratulations trustee Satt.
Alright at this time with the newly elected officials, please take your seats on the dance. Uh, Mr. Satt? How long do we have? How many seats in front? Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Did you hear that part when he said obey the mayor? Okay. Always one. Okay, at this time, before we get started, I want to present something to a person that's been very instrumental in my arrival, in my, um, sin in life. So, at this time, I'd like for my wife, please come up. I want to present this to you, do my ride or die, use my left, uh, right hand, everything that I've done, it's been with your, with you, with you, uh, helping me out. So this is just a small token, and I want to give you your flowers while you can smell them. And, uh, thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, interrupt the meeting real quick.
No.
Uh, on behalf of your wife, your family and friends, uh, just got a little token of their appreciation, which we'd like you to open now, so I'm gonna bring it up there.
Okay, I'll, I'll. What'd you say? Was it cartoons? Okay. Guess everybody's trying to figure out what it is. Okay, something, sometimes something wonderful happens to someone who deserves, who really deserves it. Uh, love you, congratulations, signed by, oh. I'm not gonna say all the names, but it's signed by everybody that's been helpful and has done a lot for me. Thank you guys very much. Another gavel, okay. And, I think that's enough. Oh, gavel stand, okay. It says. Okay. Yes, I do. Keep living. Okay, it says, Mayor Derek Burgess, oh, that's so great, this doesn't say anything, okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call. I'd like to call the order, the new village board. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Grant. Trustee Jacinski.
Here.
Trustee Satt.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Okay. Okay, at this time, at this time, it gives me great pleasure to ask and, and, uh, bring up my pastor, Pastor Melanie L. Seaton, Grace United Church of Christ, here in Sawthill, if she would give us the invocation. She, oh, she's going to go to the mic. Yes, ma'am.
Amen. This is the day that the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. You all are not rejoicing with me, because this is the day that the Lord has made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Let us pray. O gracious God, Creator of all that is good and perfect, we thank you sweet Savior for the blessing of this beautiful day, this day that only you could have made. God, we give you all homage, because you were in the making of this. God, the oaths and pleasures have gone forth, the words have been repeated, O God, and so right now, in the name of Jesus, we ask your anointing upon them. We are flesh, O God, we cannot do this without you, and so that we pray, O Lord, that these who have been elected to lead Sawthill will lean and trust in you, O God. We ask, O God, that there be a coming together of these who have been elected, as well as those who remain on the boards. A coming together of the residents of this village. God is speaking loudly, in ways that only those who know God can hear it. There is change on the horizon, and everybody needs to get ready. The word says, how can you love a God that you have not seen and hate your neighbor that you do? So, O God, we thank you once and again for this moment in time. We thank you, O God, for our spirit of coming together, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so very much, Pastor. Our next item is, uh, we're gonna have a musical selection by our own Mrs. Shanice Neller. Grammy Award nominee.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor, our honor and pleasure, to have my friend, Mr. Dante Harris, along with me. Um, this song was requested by someone special here this evening, and, um, I pray, um, that it's encouraging to you as it's been to us and, uh, everyone here who is serving, and you keep it with you whenever your future endeavors and whatever you pursue. Admittedly, I can be.
Oh, sorry.
Admittedly, I can be anxious at times, as I consider the challenges I have to face. Like when I work to get ahead and still fall behind, I start to wonder if I was meant to win the race. Striving to do things right, and when things go wrong, but this time I will be still. This time I will be still. Thankfully, for me, it's hard to keep feeling this way, when I consider everything I had to face. Walking every step that I need to take, on my desperate days and long dark nights. Twenty-four seven, he never sleeps, thank you Father, and then I remember it brings me peace. This time I will be still, oh, this time I will be still.
And the mountain has to move, the mountain must obey, the words that I speak, it bow down to my faith, because I've got work to do, and I'm gonna see it through, God show me the way, and I'm choosing it today. This time I will be still.
Yes, I will.
This time I will be still, oh, this time I will be still.
Yes, I will.
This time I will be still, and the mountain has to move. This time I will be still. This time I will be still.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Um, we're gonna go right into, um, the mayor's inaugural report, and... I hope that I can okay this back on. Um, distinguished guests, Madam Justice, members of the Board, Madam Clerk, family, friends, and fellow residents. Four years ago, I said that I stood on the shoulders of those who came before me, that I am stronger for their courage, that I am wiser for their words, and my shoulders will be there to hold up the ones who will follow me. It is my hope that this administration will continue to build that foundation for the future. Today is a new day. Today, we renew our 2017 commitment to getting Salt Village back on our pathway to progress. Today begins that new day. We have reached out to our residents, they have spoken their concerns, they have given us their confidence, and they, they have given us their vote. And they have given us a mandate to continue the progress we began in 2017. First, let me say all glory to God, for all the wonderful things he has done, is doing, and will do for those of us who fear him. In those who hope in his steadfast love, I will lead our great village in accordance to his will. Second, I give thanks to my wife, Juanita, for standing by me every step of the way. Y'all clap for it. Makes it easy for me to live. Uh, third, I want to thank each of us, each of our trustees in advance for our mutual commitment to serve our great village. Finally, I want to thank you, our residents, for your confidence in your elected officials. We remain committed and unwavering to restoring progress once again. Consistent progress will require hard work to be done by this administration, staff, and community. We know it can be done today. We have a renewed sense of optimism. I am thankful that we have a Village Board trustees who are committed to the hard work that is ahead. I am thankful to our village employees who are dedicated and committed to doing their job to make our community better each day. The first order of business is to implement the Hundred Day Action Plan designed to address five major areas. Our number one priority is to address the village's finances. Two, get our budget completed and approved. Number two, to complete our annual audit. Three, implement and approve critical financial policies and procedures as strongly recommended by the auditors. Our action plan addresses public improvements and infrastructure. We plan to restore dugout parkways, implement a detailed fire hydrant plan, which includes all identified inoperable hydrants. Implement a detailed road improvement plan. Implement a street, a streetlight restoration plan, and remove all dead trees in public ways. Third, we will set our priorities to revise procedures for our housing, planning, community development, and inspection services to properly and legally address. Inspections on existing homes, emergency demolitions, abandoned homes, and code enforcement. Implementation of goals and objectives previously outlined in the board-approved Strategic Plan for Progress and the 2019 Comprehensive Plan. Four, we plan to restore the parks, recreation, youth, and senior services. To ensure the success of this much-needed service, I will be asking the Village Board to create a Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Board. Allowing a citizens' board to take leadership and direction. Hiring a part-time parks director to establish youth and senior programs, and safely open the village's recreation and senior venues. Firth, fifth, we will continue to address public safety. I am proud to say that our current chiefs of police and fire will continue their respective roles in addressing the village's public safety as written in our action plan. Our chiefs will continue to build public trust, work on plans to ensure retention of our police and fire forces, strengthen the rules and regulations of our police and fire departments, and full implementation of police body cameras. We faced many challenges when I was sworn in as mayor four years ago, and I recap those accomplishments during my campaign. However, we still have so much that needs to be done. We will continue to work with our county, state, and federal partners, seeking assistance and grant opportunities to move our village forward. My administration will improve communication between the mayor, Village Board, and staff, as well as improve communication between Village Government and our residents. We will amend and correct our mutual codes to address our problems. Municipal codes to address our problems. We will continue to work on economic development initiatives to promote growth. We will focus heavily on efforts to identify grant opportunities and other sources of financing initiatives. We will continue a strong approach with our human resources roles and training of employees' needs. We will implement measurable and achievable departmental goals and objectives, which will be evaluated during regularly scheduled department head and employee evaluation reviews. We will continue to identify absentee landlords who continue to allow their properties to go into disrepair. We will fight blight, we will hold landlords accountable. Most of all, we must clean up our village, provide adequate services, and at all times, our staff will be courteous and respectful to our village residents, including our youth. We have a pathway to progress, and our comprehensive, our comprehensive plan in, in place. They are our blueprint and foundation for the future of Salt Village. We will continuously review it, amend it, and adjust its priorities as needed. We will continue our journey toward positive progress. Yes, we still have a bold plan and lofty goals, because this administration remains determined to raise our standards, to become a competitive community in the South Suburge, which will rise and raise our village's quality of life. When people said in 2019 that our plans cannot and will not work, we said, "Yes, we can." When people said in 2019, "You can't do that, and you cannot change past practices," we said, "Yes, we can." We know that change is difficult, and that some will continue to oppose it. That hard challenges lay ahead, that obstacles lie, line the pathway. But with our team, and team is together, everyone achieves more. We will work through them to continue to build a solid foundation for our future. Now, let us collectively work forward toward a new day, toward a better village, toward a place we can all be proud to call home. God bless you, and God bless our great village. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, the Village Board has comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the wonderful Justice Cynthia Wykowicz, who's in our presence, to Reverend Melanie Seaton, to you, Mayor Burgess, to the Board of trustees, to all of our department heads, to you, the residents, guests, and my family. I welcome you here, and I bring you greetings. Can you believe, four days ago, on May 7th, I celebrated 14 years as a resident of the Village of Salt Village? At that point in time, there was no way that I would even relish, thought about, visualized, and actually be where I am now as the village clerk of the Village of Salt Village. And especially not serving a second term. To that, residents who live here in the village, I thank you for that faith and trust that I did the job well, and you have faith that I will continue to do the job as well. One thing that I've strived to do over the last four years was to increase our level of communication with the residents. Now, the mayor mentioned that also, and that is a vision that we share, because we know that communication is so very, very important in order to have anything to materialize. Know that I am a servant. I'm a servant leader, but I am here to continue to serve you and to serve our village. But not only just our village, but the entire Southland community. I pledge to support our corporate authorities, as they support and represent you. The clerk's office is very vast, and I promise that my works shall always be to support you, the residents, and all of our corporate authorities. Now, you know, the mayor mentioned that we should, it's good to give people flowers while they are alive. My family traveled, most of my family, traveled a great distance to be with us this evening, and I see that they have flowers for me, so if you don't mind, may I ask them to come give me my flowers now?
Bow me, yes. Bow me, y'all women who gave flowers to them before.
Thank you, everybody!
Okay. Um, I would, next, I will ask for comments from the newly installed trustees. I'll start to my left, trustee Sam.
Thank you, thank you. I would just like to give honor to God, thank my wife for going through this with me, and thank my family and friends for their everlasting love and support. You know, things, uh, have been said, and that we maybe need to talk more about in the village, because there is some racial divide here in the village. People want to be quiet about it, and that's not gonna make the problem go away. I think we need to have that conversation and some open dialogue in the hopes that we can all come to terms of agreement that will allow this village to prosper for every resident. And I think some of the things that, that we advocate for as, as black people, maybe spirits of people who are set in certain ways, like, black lives matter. Black lives do matter, and maybe if we talk about what we mean when we say that to people, they can understand better where we're at. Black lives matter, just as every other life matters. And when I say, "Black lives matter," I'm just asking for the heart of systemic racism. When I say, "Black lives matter," I'm just asking for a, a cease and desist of racial profiling. When I say, "Black lives matter," I'm asking for all the opportunities that the 14th Amendment promises every citizen in this country. So when I say, "Black lives matter," I'm just asking for even black folks to respect and love one another with that regard. When I say that, I'm asking every one of us to open dialogue with each other in the hopes that we can understand each other better and live better together in the hopes of making this village, and I promise to work every day with all my heart to bring that racial divide together so that the Village of Salt Village can set standards for the nation. And I believe that if all of us get involved in this process, we can do that. And with that, I thank you for electing me as trustee. Thank you.
Okay, next will be trustee, uh, Grant.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to say, uh, thank you guys for coming out. It is a little chilly, so thank you for, uh, staying with us throughout this program. First, I would like to say, thank you to the residents. I mean, it's, uh, I don't take this position lightly. Um, it's truly an honor and a privilege to serve. Uh, to be elected one time is, is, is great, but to be re-elected, it just speaks volumes. I think that, uh, the residents believe and supported me enough to, uh, wanna put me in this position, and for that, I am humbled, so thank you. Next, I would like to thank my parents, they're both here tonight. Um, you know, I love you guys, I appreciate you. You never missed a moment in my life. You made sure I had everything that I needed to be successful, and, uh, so I want to share in this moment with you guys, so thank you for what you've done for me. I really appreciate you. Next, my fiancee, uh, Mayor, you got the flowers for me, Mayor?
That's for you.
Oh, Mayor, uh, we talked about this, Mayor. Sweetheart, um... The mayor will make it up to you, because he's supposed to get you the flowers, he didn't get you the flowers. Uh, but no, my, my right hand, my ride or die, um, you know, my confidant, thanks for keeping me grounded. Uh, thank you for, you know, being patient. I mean, being elected official, uh, there are some times when you have to do things that takes away time from family, right? And you've always understood that, and you've been supportive, so to that, thank you, I appreciate you, love you. To, to the new, to the new trustees, uh, we all got the same tie, all by coincidence. The, the mayor too. So, uh, no, but, you know, to, to, three, three gentlemen here who kind of share the same vision and then have the same goals for Salt Village, right? We want to leave it, uh, better tomorrow than it is today, and that's the whole purpose, right? To do something great. And, uh, with these gentlemen here, I know that we can do it. Through the current trustees, uh, that are remaining, uh, I, I hope that we can work together. You know, at the end of the day, uh, we have a chance to do something really special. And, uh, if, if, if it serves us in the service of the residents, if we do get up here and we don't do what we're supposed to do. That's the whole purpose of getting elected. So I hope that we can come together, do something good for the residents, 'cause at the end of the day, that's what this song is about. Uh, to, I don't know if trustee Brewer or trustee Todd are here. I know Brewer's not, but Todd, but thank you for your service. Um, again, being elected official is tough, but you guys did well, and I appreciate you, and I wish you best in your future endeavors. Um, and Madam Clerk, uh, I do want to say a special thank you. Uh, actually, the clerk spearheaded this production that you see, so can we please give her a round of applause? You know, so she made sure that we had heat in the back, which is kind of chilly out here, and it is tense, so, uh, definitely thank you for that. And with that being said, thank you, everybody. Uh, I really appreciate you for supporting us. Uh, love you guys, and have a great night.
Okay. Trustee Coleman.
Hello.
Hello.
Praise the Lord, everybody!
Okay.
Amen. Okay. Obviously, first, I'd like to thank God for this calling. Thank him, God, for preparing the hearts and minds of the residents that we encountered along the campaign trail. Secondly, I want to thank my wife, Carol Coleman, for being my helpmate, my support. Third, I want to thank my family, my sons and daughters, Suzie, Ricky Feller, Daniel, and David Coleman, my cousins, my cousin and pastor, Dr. Elder Cameron Walker-McClure, and her husband, John, the entire Murchison Isom CME Church family, for their prayers, and they truly have been praying. Thanks to my cousin Sharon Kimbrough, whom I drafted as my surrogate mother. Praise God, I love you. I thank my mom who died in heaven, who helped, who helped and kept me until I was... helped and kept me until I was able to stand on my own. Fourth, I thank the Burgess team. The mayor and first lady, Juanita Burgess, daughter Erica, Mary Klopp, Julia Wazawati, Mark Allen, Steve, Rodrick Grant, Larry Sapp, for their constant and tireless efforts and support. You can clap. Yes, thank you. They deserve it. Finally, I want to thank the residents of Salt Village for choosing me and giving me this chance to serve you. And in the words of Obama, those who didn't vote for me, I will be your trustee, too. Amen? Meaning that I will serve you. I will truly serve you. And lastly, I want to also thank all my enemies, or as they say in church circles, without my enemies, I wouldn't have a place to rest my feet. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Okay. Alrighty. Um, at this... at this time, I should not, to do what is fair, I want to ask the existing trustees for comments that they may have at this time. So I'll start with trustee Williams. I know you're on call, but I mean, you're talking. Trustee, no, no, they said they told. I said a big, you know...
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everyone here today. I hope that you all do understand that politics has gotten very ugly this year, but we're going to get past that. I do believe that there's not a single person who runs for public office that does not have the best intentions in heart. I have to believe that. I am also a very powerful person, powerful woman, and I pray for my community. I pray for my fellow trustees, my mayor and my clerk and my residents daily, because I do believe that the only way we can move forward as a community is if we work together. And we've got a lot of healing to do, and I'm going to tell you that I'm praying for that healing. And I feel that we will work together. We're not always going to agree on everything, but as long as we can disagree without being disagreeable. But I will say, I want you to hold my feet to the fire, just like I will be holding their feet to the fire. If it's right, I will go along with it. If it's wrong, I won't. It's as simple as that. But know this, I love each and every one of you underneath this tent, and together we will make Salt Village great again. It's going to be greater than it's ever been before, because I can see there is camaraderie in this room. We just need to embrace it, and we need to work with it, and we need to understand it's us against the world. So God bless you all, and I welcome everybody on the board tonight. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you. Trustee, Jerry Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate you as a second-term mayor, and I would like to congratulate trustee Sapp, trustee Coleman, and you, trustee Grant. I look forward to working with you guys. I also would like to thank trustee Todd and trustee Brewer for their dedication to the community. Being a trustee has really been an eye-opening experience for me. That's all I have. I hope we all can get together and work together for the residents of Salt Village.
Thank you. And last but not least, trustee Gary Bell. Okay.
I'd like to thank you guys for voting for us two years ago, but I want, out of BS aside, we're here for you. Politics is dirty. I never thought it was going to get like this. I was, I worked for, I'm in the Murchison campaign two times in a row. It was like a foot soldier. His wife, we were all tight. At one time, we were all family. We're all friends, and politics tears us apart. I've done public service for this town since I was 15 years old, 41 years, and never thought I'd be here. But I promise, I know it is holding, I'm here for all you guys. Enough's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the first order of business that this board will take, I will ask this board to vote on the appointments that I have. These are just a few of them, but first appointment that I would like to is, I would ask a motion for the appointment of ma... I'm sorry, Malcolm White, police chief.
Second.
The move by trustee Bell, and second by trustee Jazinski. Any questions? Madam clerk, please call.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Chief White, would you please come up and...
Good evening, Chief White. How are you? Do you know, it does my heart pleasure to administer you this official oath of office? That you raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I, Malcolm J. White, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties assigned and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as chief of police for the village of Salt Village. I will protect to the best of my ability the lives and properties of the citizens of our village, and I, Malcolm J. White, shall bear the truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Salt Village, while providing leadership and serving with loyalty and pride in our Salt Village Police Department according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, next, I'd like to call up and ask, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to approve the appointment of Chief Stephen Barron as fire chief.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jazinski, and second by trustee Sapp.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant? Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
And trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Chief Stephen Barron, please come up. And chief, you can bring your wife up so she can... You do that. Well, you got your whole department here, huh? Okay. Y'all got to make a little room around, make your time pay for... Wow. Trustee Coleman, maybe chief. Wonder if I can get one of the cadets to come up and hold the mic for your chief, so we can raise his hand and put his hand on the mic, but just hold it in front of him.
I am getting ready to administer the official oath of office to our current and superintendent of fire chief. Please be after me. I, Stephen Barron, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and partially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
That are assigned and perform all duties.
Say it again.
That you're going to discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties assigned.
And perform all the duties incumbent...
And perform all the duties incumbent.
Upon me as the fire chief.
Upon me as the fire chief.
For the village of Salt Village.
For the village of Salt Village.
I shall protect...
I shall protect...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The lives...
The lives.
And property.
And property.
Of the citizens of our village.
Of the citizens of our village.
And I...
And I...
Stephen Barron.
Stephen Barron.
Shall bear the truth...
Shall bear the truth.
Faith and allegiance...
Faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution...
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And the charter...
And the charter.
Laws.
Laws.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the village of Salt Village.
Of the village of Salt Village.
So long as I shall be chief of the Salt Village Fire Department.
So long as I be the chief of the Salt Village Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And next, I would like to ask the board for the approved... yes. Okay. Next, now, oh, me. And then, somewhere can I get in? No, wait, I'll stand up here. No, I come up down. Let me come down forward. I want to do the chief like that. Can you see?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I would like to ask the board for a motion to approve the appointment of our village engineer, Robinson Engineering.
So moved, second.
Moved by trustee Jazinski, and second by trustee Williams. Coleman? Please call her, or yes?
Thank you, sir. Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes. Motion carried. Mr. Zarin, would you please come forward?
Well, all right now, how about a little space? If you want to come join me on my square?
Oh, do you have, does he got a mic? Okay. Can I get somebody to hold? Okay, go ahead. My flag.
I'm getting ready to introduce you. Hi.
Hi.
James Arden.
James Arden.
Senior project manager.
Senior project manager.
Of Robinson Engineering.
Of Robinson Engineering.
Captain, appointed.
Having been appointed.
As the village engineer.
As the village engineer.
In the village of Salt Village.
In the village of Salt Village.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge the duties assigned.
And impartially discharge the duties assigned.
And perform all the duties incumbent.
And perform all the duties...
Encumbered.
Encumbered.
Upon me as village engineer.
Upon me as village engineer.
For the village of Salt Village.
For the village of Salt Village.
I will obey.
I will obey.
Bound by the law.
And be bound by the law.
And for the truth.
And ordinances.
As are now.
As are now.
Or may be established.
By the village of Salt Village. By the village of Salt Village.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I still respect taxpayers' interests. By serving as the faithful protector.
By serving as the faithful protector.
Of the village's assets. And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
In partially perform the duty.
In partially perform the duty.
Of the village engineer.
Of the village engineer.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're very welcome. You wear your...
Alright.
Will y'all just sit down? Oh. Okay, oh, we gonna take pictures? What, out to Oliver? After the leaders are... No. 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 We gonna take it down, we gonna take that. Okay, because I'm gonna tell, adjourn, so... Pardon me, who's gonna take a picture? Okay, alright. Okay. This is gonna be easy. At this time, I would accept and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Okay, move. It was moved by trustee Williams, and second by trustee Jazinski and others. Roll call. Trustee Hurry.
This is the motion to adjourn. Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, the second by there. Motion carried. Thank you guys very much. Thank you for bringing this cold weather and, uh, making this possible. Thank you so much. Uh, I think the trustees wanted to stick around, all of them, take pictures, we can do that. Thank you. Thank you for coming out. See ya.